Walk in here. There we go. Now you can. We have taken, we have taken the complaints about the audio in here to heart and we are, we're working on it, just so you know. I will go ahead and reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements as stated in original law, that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Holler.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Ms. Holler.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
And I will now ask Mrs. Donner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to announcements and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. September is attendance awareness month and we are reminded that student attendance and success go hand in hand. Missing even two days a month can affect students' grades, reading level, and graduation rates, and put students on a path to chronic levels of absence or missing 10% or more of school days. For example, as was shared at the last board meeting last year, our high school students who missed less than 5% of instructional days had a 73% pass rate, while students who were absent 10% of the time had a 39% pass rate, or a 34-point reduction in performance. So this month, we really look to our families to start the year well and to partner with us to encourage regular daily attendance and engagement in school, because that's what leads to students' success. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And now we will move on to students and staff recognitions. You ready? I'll turn it over to Mrs. Donner and Mr. Hosang. Will you join me below? Tonight, we are proud to recognize Max Schill from War Hill High School. Max, can you please come forward? This past spring, Max competed at the Division Four Outdoor State Track and Field Championships, where he secured first place in the discus and an impressive throw of 159 feet and 2 inches, breaking his own school record. Max's success didn't stop there. He also took first place in discus at the Division Four A Regional Championship and dominated at the Bay River District Championship, earning first place in both discus and shot put. Beyond his outstanding athletic achievements, Max is a dedicated team captain. He exemplifies leadership by supporting his teammates, always being the first to congratulate them on personal records or offering encouragement after a tough meet. Max truly embodies the spirit of a War Hill student athlete, and we are honored to celebrate his accomplishments tonight. Congratulations, Max. We would also like to recognize the School Health Initiative Program, SHIP, this evening. Joining us are Liz Callen, SHIP's Culinary and Garden Educator, and Kristen Boykin, Lindsay Ambrose, and Joyce Darcy, Special Education Teachers from Tuaneau Middle School and Stonehouse Elementary School. Liz, Kristen, Lindsay, and Joyce, can you please come forward? SHIP was honored this summer in the 2024 Virginia School Boards Association Food for Thought Competition. The SHIP program collaborated with the Division Special Education Department to create the award-winning Exceptionally Healthy Lifestyles Cooking Program for students with disabilities to learn about healthy eating. Students in 30 classrooms across all 16 schools gained cooking knowledge, skills, and confidence in dynamic hands-on cooking labs focused on health and wellness. Congratulations, Liz, Kristen, Lindsay, Joyce, and SHIP. This concludes our recognition for the evening. We will now invite Dr. Littleton up, Principal from James Blair Middle School, to share a school spotlight with us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron, and the greater WJCC school community. Tonight, I'm thrilled to present our school-based professional development program, which last year was titled, "Growing Together." This teacher-centered initiative was crafted to enhance our educators' abilities in lesson planning, collaboration, and creating a supportive culture of high expectations. Last school year, we had a large influx of new staff members, and our primary goal was to provide a robust support system that would not only aid in their professional growth, but also contribute to their retention. I'm excited to share with you a behind-the-scenes look at the work we did last year, but more excited to share that through the efforts of this program, we only hired five new teachers this past year. Our program is a combination of trainings that we conduct before school, after school, and during teaching planning time. Just earlier today, we kicked off year two of the series that is appropriately titled, "Continue the Journey." Thank you to our two assistant principals, Erin Burkhart and Jennifer Stanley, along with our Technology Integration Coach, Ashley Hurst, and our School Improvement Specialist, Megan Steeman, who were all instrumental in building this program and creating an environment of continuous growth and teamwork at James Blair Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Littleton.
Here at James Blair, we have so many different types of teachers. We have brand-new teachers that have never, ever taught before. We have teachers that just came out of a program, and then we have veteran teachers. Everybody needs something different, so it's very important, and it was intentional for us to design a program that would offer something for everyone. We were able to select a series of PDs that fit us best. One of the ones that I selected was an activity on NearPod, because I wanted to use that more in the library, and I actually learned a lot about NearPod that I was not aware of before.
Our focus with professional development was to really target our teachers' needs in learning how to lesson plan, collaborate together.
We've had an opportunity to get together with small groups and teaming up with teachers that aren't necessarily in our same field of study, which has been a good way to meet some faculty I haven't talked to before, but just sharing ideas across the classroom as far as behavior management techniques, integration technology. So I've enjoyed the experience this year.
The teachers come in, there's always a warm-up, then there's always direct instruction, and then there's always something, a practical application that they do during that 10 minutes, and then there's an exit ticket. So we're modeling best practice for what they're supposed to do in the classroom.
The maximum is 10 minutes.
We are in a technology world right now, and these kids eat up anything that we can give them with technology, so automatically they're hooked just by the fact that you're teaching them something new that they have never used before, and it gets them engaged into their learning so that they can hopefully remember the things that you're teaching through that tool, and it makes a more lasting impression on their knowledge.
Something that definitely stands out for me is the FLIP website. I was very unfamiliar with it and was introduced to it recently, where a student that may not feel as comfortable getting up and speaking in front of a class in real time might be able to record something on their own and present it that way. That would definitely help a student gain confidence in learning the subject matter and actually looking forward to an assignment.
The biggest thing that I've seen this training throughout the year help our teachers is that they have developed a confidence in what they're doing.
When something new is out there, hey, I'll try it and see how well it fits in the classroom.
This is the best professional development I've had, as long as I've been in WJCC. That's the highest compliment I can give.
Thank you, Dr. Littleton, and the staff at James Blair. It's wonderful to see teachers and staff engaging in their own personal growth so that they can help the students grow. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to public comment. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any audible demonstrations during the speaker presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you.
We have a few speakers, so I'm going to call them three at a time so that you'll be ready. Our first speaker is Stephen Maines, followed by Mike Joseph and Matthew Fleischer.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Maines, James City County, and we provided studies that have beaten this issue to death, and we've shown that teachers' unions do not help students nor aspiring teachers. So I ask you tonight to vote yes for students and teachers and against teacher unions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maines. Our next speaker is Mike Joseph.
Hello, I'm Mike Joseph. I am from James City County, and I was here last meeting, and I'm back again because I feel strongly about that we should not unionize the teachers. So I'm not in favor of unionizing the Williamsburg James City County School teachers. I want the school board to vote yes on tonight's agenda, item 8.05, Resolution R-1924. The Williamsburg James C. Education Association is affiliated with the statewide Virginia Education Association, which in turn is affiliated with the much larger National Education Association that we know as NEA. In recent history, teacher unions have been instilling their social and political agendas into the school system throughout our nation. In some cases, these are considered divisive concepts. I do not want our school board to lose any of their autonomy in administering their responsibilities. I do want our school board focused on academic performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Our next speaker is Matthew Fleischer, followed by Marco Sardi, Lori Cardenas, and Andrew Kason.
Thank you, esteemed board members. Growing up in the small town of Christiansburg, Virginia, I had no conception of what a union was or what it did beyond threatening to shorten sports seasons. Unions were not intrinsic to the culture of Montgomery County, but in the short time since the archaic policies prohibiting Virginia teachers from standing in solidarity with one another were repealed, Montgomery County has managed to do something that I previously would have thought inconceivable. It became one of the state's first divisions to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with its teachers' union. I am here tonight to urge the board to reconsider its decision to not align itself with the majority of WJCC teachers seeking to follow this example. Last year at War Hill High School, where I teach math, the department was hamstrung by unfilled positions right from the get-go, and students suffered for it. When it became clear to our administration that this was a disservice to these children, we took on additional responsibilities to help rescue those affected from the hole we had dug for them. The results were unbelievable, unprecedented year-over-year growth that no one could have anticipated, but this came with unprecedented attrition. Talented teachers whom I care deeply about and who care deeply about their students left for other opportunities, and our ability to maintain the success has been jeopardized. While I'm not naive enough to believe that collective bargaining to be a panacea for the many challenges facing our district, I believe that this show of good faith could go a long way towards ameliorating issues of recruiting and retaining teachers. I recognize that the board has concerns about the potential division split as it pertains to this matter, but the possibility of future logistical issues cannot stand in the way of us doing the right thing for our teachers and our students. We've already lost a year to these deliberations. We cannot afford to lose more. I'm grateful for your service and for lending your air on this matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fleischer.
Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. I wanted to speak honestly with you today about power and choice. Power is a burden taken unwillingly to have the ability to choose for others which paths they will walk. We can see an exercise of this power tonight, and one in which I am deeply disappointed. This resolution does not give voice to employees, and I feel betrayed by members of the board who, by backing this document, go against their stated values prior to taking office. I have not, however, lost hope in continuing our advocacy. WJCE appreciates the board stating a willingness to continue to listen to feedback, and there remains potential for future bargaining, but part of that is speaking truth, and I want to share with you some truth that I know. The following quotes are taken from our past interviews conducted by WJCEA's PAC Committee, in which candidates who now sit on the board were given an opportunity to share their positions about bargaining and other policies. "We use these interviews as the foundation of our support in you," which I should clarify to the public does not come from membership dues. Quote, "What do you perceive the role of WJCE to be?" Answer, "You all provide perspective as experts in your field." Question, "Do you support collective bargaining?" Yes. If collective bargaining is what is needed to support our staff and allow them to have an effective work environment. Quote, "Is WJCE's endorsement important to you?" Absolutely yes, is the answer. So which is it? Everyone says you cannot trust a politician, but I don't see politicians here. I see people I've come to respect and understand. I see mothers and fathers. I see doctors and teachers. It was your choice to draft this document from an unwillingness to listen by those who are trying to argue in good faith, and it can be your choice to come back to the table and make a better one. The power is yours to use, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi.
Lori Cardenas.
Hi, my name is Lori Cardenas, and I am a speech pathologist. This is my 29th year, and it's my 20th year here at Williamsburg James City County. I come from a family who has had businesses, and we were always against unions, and that's the way I was raised. My mother worked for a very large utility company, and she was the union buster and kept the union out of there, and that's just the way I was raised, and that's what I believed. Until I got in education and I saw all of the things that were happening, especially in the last several years, but I've been here for 20 years, and we've had to try, we have, I personally have tried to go to the administration, to go to the board, to, we have a lot of really good dialogue with Dr. Heron, sorry, the superintendent. So the thing that happened to me is I just grew and grew, and I just experienced a lot of really unfair labor practices, and I have seen so many disgruntled employees, and we really want to help you, help you. We want to help the students. We want to help. We do not want to be crazy people like those NEA, blah, 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 we're going to close the schools down. We are not that. We want to help. We want to just tell you what is wrong and sit down at a table with you and tell you what we need so we can help save education here. I'm very afraid for the future of our, of our, you know, our profession, and I'm afraid for what is happening in the schools and how the students are not getting what they need. So there's a lot of things that we could sit down and talk about and just work through together, because we only have this voice here, and there's 800 of us that sign cards that want to speak to you, and we just don't know how to do it. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Cardenas.
Our next speaker will be Andrew Kason, followed by Lewis Fitzgerald, Gary Lane, and Laura Long.
Hello, I'm Andy Kason. I'm an English teacher at Jamestown High School. I just wanted to first start off speaking personally. Please read Mrs. Lassiter's letter. I believe that students should come to a building named after someone that reflects our values today, and I do believe that James Blair deserves, James Blair students deserve a name that represents everyone. And now, speaking for WJCEA, I am very disappointed at the language in the resolution which says no to collective bargaining. I do appreciate, however, your continued promise to continue to collaborate with us, and we'll take advantage of that, but however, this does, whatever action you guys take today does not stop the conversation on collective bargaining. Too many teachers have seen the victories that collective bargaining has brought, whether it's protected planning time, a protected lunch period, simple things like that, and pretty soon, more and more teachers across Virginia are going to say, why can't I have that? And it's going to come here, and we're going to keep serving affidavits until we get the schools our students deserve. I was told at the beginning of the school year that we need to all grow, we need to, and then part of growing is stretching. In fact, in Martin Luther King's Letter from Birmingham jail text, I absolutely am honored to teach in my class, King says that tension, good tension, right, good, or Lewis's, good trouble is good. I feel that that fits perfectly with growth. We all need to grow, and I know the collective bargaining seems like a big leap for quite a few of you. However, you're in good hands. When a student doesn't understand, I don't give up, and many of us do not give up, so we're not going to give up on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason.
Our next speaker is Lewis Fitzgerald.
Good evening. I'm looking at this issue of inclusion, and the inclusion of the entire community of James City County, Williamsburg community, on the representation and identity of the minority community. I think that after the Supreme Court decision, 1954, 55, that the integration of schools in the 1960s, 70s, and on, it has been a long time since that identity where minority students, who in some cases had names that they could identify with in segregated schools, that they had some kind of background, and I would say pride in their heritage, and they lost that, a lot of times when schools were desegregated. And this is a point that's ignored over and over again by the point of saying, so what? We're going along all right. We're going along all right. And we see that it is an urgent need for those students, as they graduate, an identity of whom they can relate to, the entire community joined together in relating to those who came before them and made a lot of difference in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Gary Lane.
Good evening. It's going to be short and sweet. Vote yes for the teachers and the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Our next speaker is Laura Long, followed by Mary Lassiter, Jessica Anderson, and Susan Franz.
Hello, my name is Laura Long, and my student is a sophomore. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I'm here tonight to talk to you about safety in our schools. While this issue continues to get worse nationwide, WJCC fails to make any real change. Last year, I was wanted to enter a band concert. We received an email that bags would no longer be allowed at sporting events. We were told weapons detection would be piloted, but to my knowledge, nothing has come of that program, and the system purchase is not in regular use. Why not? Each classroom has only one way to reach emergency personnel quickly. Other divisions have found a way to make this a priority. In Georgia, teachers can reach EMS by pushing a button on their ID badge. In school systems to the east and west of us, metal detectors are in use at every school every day in an effort to keep students safer. To me, there is nothing more important than the safety of my child, but I don't believe that WJCC shares this as a priority. I send him to school every day to learn, and he's doing a great job of that, but it's come to my attention that his focus is elsewhere. While he's in his three AP classes, honors English, and pre-calculus, and he has goals of going to a very prestigious university, he's sitting in class, but he's not thinking about what the teacher's saying. He's not thinking about what happened on social media, because he doesn't even have an account. He's thinking about whether or not the division is doing enough to keep him safe, and whether or not the lockdown drills that he goes through would even work if the time came. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Mary Lassiter is our next speaker.
A horse-drawn carriage carried the body of Reverend Tab along Duke of Gloucester Street. Colony Williamsburg Foundation helped pay tribute to the longtime religious and community leader. Director of Public Relations at CW said, "It's the first time CW has offered that kind of tribute." It was because of Reverend Tab's longstanding ties to the community and foundation. My four-time great-grandmother, Morning Bird, was born in 1831. She was enslaved in James City County. I wonder if her ancestors were among the enslaved that toil at Women Mary under James Blair's regime of institutionalized slavery. College slaves were charged with cutting trees for fuel in the woods surrounding the college, and in the late 1760s, the college found it necessary to hire two slaves to cut and cart wood for its use. In 1837, the faculty passed a resolution stating that Joe, the college servant, is required to cut four cords of wood weekly during the recess, indicating the continued importance of slave labor for maintaining fires at the 19th-century college. Once, just one cord is a sizable amount of wood. Stat, it measures four feet high, four feet wide, and eight feet long. When I was at James Blair, there was nothing taught to us about who James Blair was. I didn't learn about- I didn't learn about his history until 2020 and I don't feel that the students today are really being told the true story about James Blair and it's time for a change. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lassiter.
Our next speaker is Jessica Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here to speak briefly about the collective bargaining. Um, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what that is and I know there's some hesitation for a couple of reasons with the board, which I understand, one being the possible separation of the school division, that's still very much an unknown and I recognize that. But if we decide and make decisions on everything that is unknown, how do we move forward on anything? Um, I think that we need to acknowledge that that's a future topic, but not something that we need to worry about in this moment. Um, I also want to say that when it comes to any decisions that the board makes, whether it's a new, uh, track and field, a new building, um, a new AC unit, um, bringing in people to do various duties, they come to the table with you and they have a conversation about a price. They have a conversation about what the workload is going to be, what is expected of them and we're asking for the same thing. I don't think it's a big ask, um, it's simply saying, hey, we deserve a seat at the table because we are part of the process. Um, there's this idea that political or agendas are being pushed, this is simply about having a voice when it comes to our income and our salary, uh, our working conditions. It's not about uprooting curriculums or instilling our own personal beliefs on our students. It's simply saying, unions work. Every state that has allowed unions to thrive have shown the benefits of it time and again. So I really hope that you consider that when you make a final decision. I know this is something that's a continued conversation, but nearly 50% of the people working in this division think it's worth you taking a time to do, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Our next speaker is Susan Franz, followed by Joseph Catterin, Elizabeth Kane, Jackie Williams, and Alan Parm.
Hello, Susan Franz, uh, Jame City County. Um, I'm here tonight just to repeat basically what I said at the last board meeting is that I am, um, hoping that you will approve the resolution, um, R 1924 collective bargaining. I'm against collective bargaining. I have not seen any, um, definitive studies that show where it has really benefited the students. That's what I keep hearing, that's going to benefit the students, but, um, you know, nobody's been able to really show me whether that has happened. So, uh, I think that there are creative ways in which their voices can be heard and their working environment can, um, be improved to whatever it is that they think does not work for them, but I do know that, you know, when you go to get a job and, um, say, I was coming to get a job as a teacher, I sign a contract and it says, these are my working conditions, these are my hours, this is my salary. I am agreeing at that point to go with, um, what has been offered to me. So, um, you know, I'm against collective bargaining, so I hope that, uh, you guys will, um, vote as you have said that you will on this 805 action item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franz.
Our next speaker is Joseph Catterin.
Hi all, Joe Catterin, Williamsburg. Uh, I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the Campaign for Honorable and Inclusive School Names, uh, for, as per our request to change this school, James Blair Middle School, to James B. Tab Middle School. And we sent you a whole long letter, which I hope you all have read, but it's, it really is pretty simple. It's, you know, do we want this school's name to reflect equality in education or inequality? Uh, James Blair was an enslaver. Um, he not only held enslaved people himself, but he convinced the Virginia State Government to allow institutions like churches and schools, uh, to hold enslaved people and that was for his own personal benefit because he was a co-founder of the College of William &amp; Mary. He loaned the college, uh, some of its first enslaved people and under his direction, the college bought, uh, the Nottoway Quarter Plantation with 17 enslaved workers. Generations of black children were born into slavery because of James Blair. And on the other hand, you have Reverend James B. Tab, who was honored by the Virginia General Assembly, uh, for his community service in Williamsburg and in Jame City County. He was referred to as the Dean of Preachers. A lot of people go to ministers for advice, ministers went to him for advice. That's how renowned he was in our community. And he led the effort for integration in our school division, uh, by enrolling his own daughters in, uh, what were then whites-only schools, um, setting an example for the rest of the community and the first fully integrated graduating class graduated a few years later because of his efforts. Um, so yeah, I really don't think there's any reason to delay this decision to change the school name. Uh, this school was named in the 50s to send a message to integrating black students that this would stay a whites-only school and it's about time that changed. I, I don't think that the, you know, school split decision is any reason to delay it and I don't think it's a reason to deny collective bargaining rights to teachers either.
Thank you, Mr. Catterin. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Kane.
Good evening, thank you for having us here. I'd like to talk about some things about collective bargaining, um, where maybe it just isn't going to do everything that everybody would hope. It is limited in scope. Collective bargaining may not effectively address all the concerns of teachers such as curriculum development, teacher assessment, educational policies, those are left up to administrators. Could create some inequitable representation as well. They don't always represent all the teachers' concerns. It's ki- it's kind of impossible for any collective to do so. And some concerns may be left out because the concerns that come forward will be the ones that the leaders come and tell you, the ones that they choose to come and bring forward. This could really alienate some people from diverse backgrounds, varying degrees of seniority. Could also potentially lead to unequal treatment and representation. Also, there could be added administrative burdens. It can create additional administrative tasks and responsibilities for school districts. And it could interfere with the support of monies that need to go to actual students and facilities and things like that. There's some things to think about. I would urge you to, um, vote yes in saying no to collective bargaining, which is confusing, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kane.
Our next speaker is Jackie Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Heron, members of the board, I'm Jacqueline Bridge-Forth-Williams and I am the founder and executive director of the Village Initiative. I am here, I, Mr. Catterina has spoken so eloquently about why the decision to make the name change to represent Dr. James Tab is appropriate. I'm going to read a letter penned, um, June 4th, 1969. "To concerned citizens of Williamsburg, Jame City County, the Negro constituency of Williamsburg and Jame City has been systematically ignored and totally disregarded in all vital areas of policymaking in the government of this area. Recently, there have been two policymaking positions open, one in Williamsburg and one in Jame City county, county, namely on the school boards. So concerned citizens tried through orderly channels to have these Negroes placed on these boards. From all appearances, these requests were ignored and in some cases, not even discussed. The city council says, wait while legislation meets and we will ask for our board to be enlarged, then we will appoint a Negro. The power structure of Jame City County has completely ignored, ignored the issue. We have waited 300 years. How much longer must we wait? When orderly channels are closed to a people, what else is left for them to do but to adopt some alternate? This is a call for whites and blacks who are concerned with justice to use whatever pressure is necessary to see that it all, all citizens in this area are represented adequate, adequately in our government and city. We are concerned with the action now. This letter was written in 1969. We're not concerned about 1970, not four years from now, but now. And this letter was signed, the first signee was Reverend, Reverend James B. Tab. He advocated, he advocated for those things and that's why we are here today to ask that that change be made. Someone who represents equity and caring in our schools and not enslavement and slavery. It is time, it's been 400 years, slavery is done and enslavers' names should not be on the schools of the, where our children attend. What message does that send to our children? Me and other children who have attended these schools. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Ellen Parm.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board, Chairman Ortigo and Dr. Heron. My name is Ellen Parm and I teach here in WJCC and I'm a member of WJCEA. Um, I'm also a history teacher and in my class, one thing I always push my students to do is, one, make sure that your sources are valid and that you always speak facts. And I've been hearing a lot of things about WJCEA that have been alternative facts. Number one, we are not just a teachers' union, we are a union full of all education employees and education support employees. Number two, we are already unionized and we've been in WJCC for many, many, many decades. And it pains me to see so many people speaking falsely about us and being led by false sources. Also, I do support that we need to change the name of James Blair as well. Now moving forward, I am disappointed that the resolution on the agenda for today does not support collective bargaining at this time due to, of course, waiting on the feasibility study decision from the city. However, I am grateful and hopeful that our talks will continue as, as well as our communicative relationship to discuss and collaborate on items of importance pertaining to the growth of our school division and our students and collective bargaining. Um, and speaking of students, um, I know that, uh, yesterday there was, um, an incident at War Hill and thanks to WJCC procedures from the threat assessment, citizen staff were met with a swift response, um, while certain students, uh, also received medical attention as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parm. I believe that concludes our public comment for this evening. All right, we will move on to our consent agenda and I will read this long list. Our consent agenda includes item 7.01, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll for June 2024. Item 7.02, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll for August 2024. Item 7.03, approval of minutes from the meeting on August 20th, 2024. Item 7.04, approval of minutes from the school board retreat on August 29th, 24. Item 7.05, approval of minutes from the meeting on September 3rd, 2024. Item 7.06, approval of minutes from the school board retreat on September 12th, 24. 7.07, approval of resolution R 1724 Bullying Prevention Month. 7.08, approval of resolution R 1824 National School Lunch Week. Item 7.09, approval of revisions to policy AA school division legal status. Item 7.10, approval of revisions to policy AC non-discrimination. Item 7.11, approve, approval of review of policy BBBC Board Member Oath of Office. Item 7.12, approval of revisions to policy BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Item 7.13, approval of revisions to policy BCF, school board committees. And last but not least, item 7.14, approval of revisions to policy BDDH/KD, public participation at school board meetings. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Is there a second?
A second.
Did you want to make a comment real quick?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I'm going to abstain from the vote for the consent agenda. I was not present for the August 20th meeting and as opposed to taking that out and causing some issues with the, with the agenda tonight, I'll just abstain, uh, from the vote. Uh, if I was going to vote, I would be voting in favor of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Okay. Ms. Holler.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Abstain.
Ms. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to action items. 8.01, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs., excuse me, Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Item 8.02, approval of amendment to FY25 Grants Fund Budget. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the amendment to the FY25 Grants, uh, Fund Budget to $8,467,831.50.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Holler.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Item 8.04, approval of revisions to policy IKAA Final Examinations. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve, I'm sorry, it's not the textbook before.
Textbook.
Did I say the wrong things?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed one, I'm, sorry. 8.03, approval of 2024-25 textbook selection and adoption proposal. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the 2024-25 textbook selection and adoption proposal as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Holler.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
8.04, approval of revisions to policy IKAA Final Examinations. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the revisions to policy IKAA Final Examinations as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there any discussion?
Just can we, can we just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Um, can we just talk about what this policy does, just so we have an understanding before we vote?
Dr. Keever.
Yes, ma'am. Let me get to that policy so that I can speak to it intelligently. Give me one second, Mr. Riffle. Sound good. The intent with this policy revision that we're bringing forward is to, um, clarify, A, that final exams or those culminating assessments are provided to students and then put the superintendent in a position to draft regulations that outline the process for supporting the exam administration. As we discussed in our last meeting, uh, the language that's being suggested to remove on lines 13 through 34 have been placed into the corresponding regulation IKAA. Thank you, Dr. Keever. Speaking to the motion, um, I will be voting no because I'd like to keep this in the school board's wheelhouse. Um, this is not a described law in Virginia that we have to change this section. The VSPA has no outline for us to give this power away, so I'd like it to stay slowly changed and, and our wheelhouse to change it moving forward, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. No further, any further discussion?
Um, I will just say that I am, am voting in favor of this policy because, uh, there's the difference between governance and execution and so as the board, our job is governance and setting the high-level policy, while it's the administration's job to execute on that and thus I feel that it is appropriate to have that sitting in a regulation.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Ms. Holler.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
No.
Mrs. Hunley.
No.
Mr. Riffle.
No.
Dr. Cavassos.
No.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
No.
Item eight point zero five, approval of resolution R nineteen twenty four, collective bargaining. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution R dash nineteen dash twenty four, collective bargaining as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Is there a second? Is there a second? Well, I will second it. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to speak now, Madam Chair. I'll be voting, I guess, the opposite. So I'm in support of collective bargaining and I'll explain my reasoning. Before I was a school board member and before I even learned about the WJCA, I had these values before. I approached anyone, approached me to become a school board member or to even solicit a candidate petition form or anything like that. During my time in which I was a candidate, I did seek out the pact and I would like to clarify, I did not receive money from the pact. I not raised money and political donations, not that hard, and so did not need that. I did use their image likeness on things for the Cambahain, but that was not my, you know, it was not the need of my campaign. The values come from my time as an intern in the state house. During twenty twenty, I was an intern for a house member that sat on labor and commerce and the bill HB five eighty two came about. There were robust discussions of this across the state from Democrats and Republicans with their concerns of the code section and the law was passed in twenty twenty. There's been three sessions until to today that that could have taken this out of law and it has not happened. There's been no line of obituaries by the governor or any executive order that would change this. So this is in our wheelhouse to do and I understand them off the side of the will of the board today. But I just want to leave us with a thought that I had heard from someone at the grocery store or just, I say the grocery store, but I heard in my community as I was at my mailbox, a gentleman who is from Canada but has become a US citizen said to me, he said, they get something you've never had, you have to do something you've never done. And I understand this is a scary thing. This is trusting people who we've already trusted with our students and with our time and with our money because we do, our board does that. We just did it a second ago. We approved the personnel actions. So we do trust these people. They they take your money and they they foster education. And I I'm always impressed by them. When we visit these schools, we visit the different people, even if they're not a part of the union, they are the hardest working people, I'd say, in our community and and I I'm very grateful for our time while we we do get to see them. I do want to speak to the monetary amount that people do talk about. I do want to mention that we've sent back ten million dollars or close to ten million dollars from unspent personnel files this past cycle and that's just because we haven't retained a certain amount of employees or we haven't hired in a certain way. So this is potentially a way to look at moving that needle forward and helping our community grow in ways to get people to become educators and a part of our team. My final thought is from just all those values and again, I understand tonight's vote and how, you know, maybe I'm not not the prevailing side of this issue. But for my values and now being elected and having the endorsement of WJCA, I do I do support what they're doing and I've heard them out. I've heard from my constituents, I've asked publicly and I've asked people in emails and they've written to me. And I was elected on this issue. I mean, I think clearly there was opposition mailers against me on this. I'm not an idiot. I have opposition research, like, you know, like, I know this stuff. So so I'm unapologetically gonna be on the side of workers today because these workers are some of the hardest working people I know. Every teacher we hire has a student's best interest at heart and they just want a chance to get more of their fair share and support their fellow workers. And that's not something you can't say. We could not do here. I understand the school board has the power to do that moving forward. It's that that takes a lot of time and collective bargaining is a quicker action for this collective group. So I will be in support of them and which will be voting no today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Other open, Mrs. Hunley, go ahead.
So I'm speaking also as an individual board member for myself and I want to thank all of the teachers and the WJCA who we sat down and spoke with and answered my questions and provided the information that I wanted and needed. I thank other people as well as other teachers I talked to. I have talked to other divisions. I have heard back from other divisions. I have looked for all the answers to my questions. I still believe that we can get to what the teachers need to be supportive without collective bargaining and the financial responsibilities that come with it. We as a board have a lot of balls in the air and it's not just the city split or county split. There's a lot of things that we want to do well and we want to, you know, do it with decency and order and we want to be clear on everything. I'm still not a hundred percent clear on some things. I I really do believe that teachers have worked very hard and there are things that they are lacking and I believe that there are things that we can provide and we would like, well, I'm gonna speak for myself, but I've heard from other board members that we would like to know what is, if it's compensation, for example, wanting a contract to say that if you stay after for a certain amount of hours, you should be compensated. That that is is what we do with other professionals and we should do it with teachers as well. And if we need to do that as a board during budget time to make sure those compensations can take place, that is our job to do. I love teachers and children. I don't know which one I love more, both equally. I don't have a political or religious bone in my body, so you can't tie it to any of that. So again, I believe that we can support teachers and this, and I will say this, if we can't do it this year, then I am very happy to hear every one of the the teachers that came forward to say they are hopeful and they will continue to come to the table and they will continue to send affidavits. And if I don't see the changes that I think are necessary, then I will be voting differently next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Are there any other comments, Mrs. Donner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So as I was, you know, going through the process of becoming on the school board and sharing my, right, my own personal history of my grandmother was New York City school teacher thirty years and then in the New York City Teachers' Union and the importance of what that was to my family to make sure that she had a fair, fair wages, fair living standard. My grandfather's New York City cop, twenty five, actually twenty seven years on the force, you know, New York Police Union and how important those union jobs were to them. And when I look at collective bargaining in the state of Virginia, I think one of the things that gives me pause is the ways in which it is set up is purposefully weak and doesn't, I think, support unions in the way that they are constructed in other places. And so as I've been thinking about that, as I've been thinking about the power that rests within the school board and not, or that's been discussed in other ways, but for me, a lot of it is the fiscal power that we lack because we don't have the ability to control our budgets, that we are at the mercy of our funding partners in order to receive what funding we have and then how do we allocate those dollars in a way that supports both teachers, that supports our students' learning, that supports expansion? That's one of the things that I'm still wrestling with of how to reconcile those those places. The other piece is for me is I've I've heard and I've really appreciated the arguments about why, even though there is proposed split and that is a few years away, that that isn't a reason to pause on this. And I just still think as we are looking at how do we make sure as a board that we are part of that conversation around to stay together or to split? And how are we making sure that we're, you know, advocating for the school division in those sets of conversations? As I think about if there were a split, the time that we would have spent negotiating, like, what happens with those contracts? For me, it's, I'm not against collective bargaining. I'm just, for me, the timing is the is the issue at the moment. I also really appreciate the hours and hours that WJCA has spent educating their members but also spending time educating us, answering our questions, providing evidence, providing, you know, third party information and studies that, you know, talk about how unions can help support children, how they can be beneficial. So I just want to say, I I hear you and you have shaped my thinking around widening my view as to what the different challenges are that our faculty and staff are experiencing. What are some of the things that as we're looking at how our contracts are written and what places where there might be opportunities for us to make some changes or to address some of those issues? And so what I'm asking the WJCA is, I think a number of us have heard you keep talking to us and giving us the opportunity to make those changes and to make things better for teachers and faculty outside of collective bargaining. And I I will also say that if, you know, we are not able to meet that, then, you know, definitely let's reopen the conversation. But I just wanted to say thank you. You've been heard and I think that it's really propelling the board to start to look at some other things differently.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Any other comments, Mr. Hosang?
I don't know how many of you heard my comments from the last school board meeting, but I've been in the labor field, labor law area for over twenty years. I've seen the benefits of the union. I've seen the liabilities of a union. But what I can tell you that in our school system at this point, it's, that is not the best interest of for our school system. The last time I talked, I talked about if we as a board approved this or allowed this, that we would be giving up some of the power that we have, the power that our voters gave us, the power that the city of Williamsburg has given to two members and we haven't been authorized to give that power away. So we can't do that. But what was kind of interesting was after those comments, the WJCA came out and said that was their intent, was that they were trying to get some of the power. It wasn't just for them to have a seat at the table anymore. It was for to get some of our power. And again, that is not something that we can give up, at least not in my opinion. I don't fully believe that the our employees know what they're looking at when they're asking to unionize. Right now, any employee, if they wanted to, could come up and talk to one of our, one of the school board members. They could talk to one of the administrators. They could talk to the superintendent. They have that ability and we will very willingly talk with any employee that wants to talk with us. Once you unionize, you lose that ability. You cannot come and talk to us on any issue that you feel like it because the state is gonna tell you what issues you're gonna talk to us about, the federal, your federal agency's gonna tell you what issues you can talk about. And just in talking to us, there are so many laws and rules that that limit how we can have those discussions. But right now, you have that ability. You can come talk to us whenever you want to. I want to keep that going. I think everyone on this board wants to keep that going. I I don't want to speak for the superintendent or for the administration, but I mean, I would go out on a limb and say they want to keep that going. You have that ability to come talk to us now. You have that authority, you have that power. You get, you give up that power if you unionize at this point. So again, I just believe that we have a great opportunity right now to continue our relationship with with our employees, that we have a chance to be able to talk with them when we want to, on our terms, on their terms. I'm gonna go out on a limb again and say I don't think there's anyone on this board that hasn't been willing to speak with any teacher, that hasn't been willing to listen to you. We may not be able to do what you want, but at least you, we have that conversation. At least we can talk to each other. And if we unionize, you can't do that. We can't do that. And so I'll be voting for the resolution tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Any other comments before I?
I I do have some brief comments. This is a vote that I have definitely struggled with and have had many conversations and have come to really appreciate and see both sides of the argument. But the vote tonight is whether to support this resolution as written and I'll just speak for myself that I will not be supporting the resolution as written tonight. I do think that it goes a little bit too far in in saying no without keeping our board accountable for continuing the conversation. And some things that have allowed me to come to this decision is I had hoped that we would form some sort of joint or exploratory committee to be able to continue to discuss the pros and cons, to find out if collective bargaining is in fact a good fit for us at this time to possibly sit together at the same table and discuss ideas and to understand each other's side. I think all of us on the board, we have, we have been given a great amount of power and and privilege and with that, we've been able to educate ourselves, which is not something that everybody has the opportunity to do, to sit at a table together. And so I think we had the opportunity to do that and to to be more engaging. And I don't think that this resolution, I just don't support it as written. I can't say whether I support or don't support collective bargaining for our division. I I want, if if it is in fact where we go, at some future point, it needs to be what's best for our students. I do value our teachers' input and all of the ideas brought forth by all of our teachers. I will say that in all of my time as a teacher in our division and also visiting all the schools, I have yet to meet a teacher in this division who does not go above and beyond and who does not put students' needs first. And and so I do believe that all the teachers who have come time after time and who have, who are listening tonight and the fifty two percent of licensed personnel who said that they support collective bargaining, I believe that they just want to bring hope and opportunity and they want to work with us. So without us making more of an effort, a real effort to put in place a robust teacher input and collaboration plan, I don't believe that, at least I cannot support the resolution because we're saying no without having something better in place. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Did you have any comments, Dr. Cavassos?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay. I will just say something briefly and then I'm gonna ask Dr. Heron something. For me personally, I'm not speaking for the board at the moment, I'm speaking for myself. This is not a vote on whether or not I, the board, supports teachers. It's not a vote for me on how much teachers are valued. It's not a vote on whether teachers have valid concerns that should be addressed and things that could be fixed. It's not a vote on whether teachers should have a say or a seat at the table. For me, this is a vote about whether collective bargaining is the only way to have a seat at the table, which I don't believe that it is. I think you've heard, sort of echoed from almost every member here that we genuinely desire to understand, to talk to teachers, to understand the concerns and we believe there are a number of things that could be done that we have not exhausted yet. And so it is not, so it's not about being scared, it's not about being uninformed, it's not about being swayed by misinformation or, or comments that don't fully embody what, what the WJCA is trying to do. I, I genuinely believe that the people who came and spoke tonight and have been advocating for this want a benevolent conversation where we collaborate and work together and come up with great solutions. I, I believe that's the goal. I just don't believe that that is what will occur when it comes down to it. And there's a lot of, of risk of unforeseen consequences, a lot of, of potential financial burden, legal situations, administrative burdens and potentially adversarial relationships that I do not think would be in the best interest of the division, of teachers, of the board, of students. And so that's, that is why I, I am in favor of the resolution as it's written. Again, it's not out of disrespect for any of the efforts or the hard work that teachers do every day or even WJCA has done in advocating for themselves and, and for their colleagues. Like I said, we do think that there are valid concerns and things that we would, we would love to explore and address as a board. In that being said, we have, at the last meeting, we did ask Dr. Heron to bring some ideas about what a much more robust employee input process could look like, perhaps similar to what Ms. Chen was implying. And I'm just curious if you have anything to bring back to us this evening, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, we're not making a formal presentation tonight because it's, it's disconnected, you know, from the decision that's been made tonight. However, we did have sat down with a number of staff and started to think about what we could create as a more robust employee input process that would come back to the board for their consideration. And Dr. Kiefer, Ms. Wallace has been sort of leading this discussion. And these are just preliminary ideas. And if the board is interested in us trying to raise up something to give more voice and address some of the needs that are obviously out there, then we will certainly pursue it further and bring back a more formal presentation to the board at a later date. So, Dr. Kiefer, Ms. Wallace, you want to just give a sense of our thinking and what it might look like? Not dependent on the vote, vote tonight, but just something we're considering as an organization.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We have talked over the last several weeks about a way to engage with employees across all of the different work categories and work groups. And what we are focusing on right now is the possibility of bringing a more formal presentation back to the board on October 1st for your meeting that lays out an employee input process plan, providing employee groups with an opportunity for in-person conversations facilitated by staff members around four key topic areas that we think are of importance, based on what we've heard over the course of the last several months. One of those areas would be job satisfaction and responsibilities. Another area would be resources and support. A third area would include work environment and culture. And then the fourth area is communication and decision-making. Those sessions would be designed to provide employees with overarching ground rules for the conversation and then divide employees up based on their specific work category. There would be facilitators that would help capture the information and then we would provide that information back to the attendees and then prepare to have a presentation for the school board a little bit later this fall in advance of the budget conversations. Right now, we're tentatively looking at the end of October through the middle or second or third week in November, which would position us to come back to the board at your December 12th meeting, if I have that date correct, with some overview information.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer.
So, Madam Chair, the, the ideas are not fleshed out fully, but there is a potential process that we could move forward with, you know, if the board would wish us to do that.
Yes.
Can I just ask a quick question? What, which, which category would work compensation for overtime? Which one is that, number two or number?
Frankly, Ms. Hunley, it could fall into a couple of different categories depending upon the employee's job classification. One of our designs in this, as we talked about it, was providing perhaps as many as three sessions for instructional staff over a series of evenings and then two sessions for support staff and two sessions for administrative staff. So it could be that that topic comes forward in, in one or more of those category areas. And then as a group, we talk about where does it best sit? And what is a potential solution to address that, that specific concern?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There, are there any questions for Dr. Kiefer or Ms. Wallace, Mrs. Donner?
I just have a question. As you are thinking about this, I'm sure you're also can, taking into consideration what we're hearing of teachers being asked to stay late. And so making sure that it is done in a way that provides the most, makes it easiest for teachers to be, and support staff and others to be able to participate in it.
That's a, that's a complex scenario. As, as we've talked about it so far, our, our initial thought process is that we would want to provide with multiple dates and time options, staff and availability for in-person dialogue. There, there may be a possibility that we could look at some form of virtual option towards the conclusion of that process. But right now, the focus is bringing people together in a room to hear the conversation and to build collaborative solutions together.
Any other questions for Dr. Kiefer?
I just want to say one last thing. This conversation about having a potential alternative to another process we were going to vote tonight has been taken up in a very rapid fashion and has been given a serious amount of thought. And I'm quite hopeful that the product that you end up with will be successful in allowing everybody to communicate in two directions.
Thank you, Dr. Cabazos. Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I have two questions. One was the stakeholder of the WJCA, was what they reached out to in this process. Could you talk a little bit about that? Is it just internal? I know it's a little bit preliminary, but as we get towards October, it'd make more sense to talk to people publicly, but...
Right, I, I, at this point, it's been internal administrative conversation around how we could best position an opportunity for all staff, whether you are affiliated with the association or not, to provide input around those four categories. Every single member of our team, WJCC, will be invited to one or more of the sessions so that there is an opportunity to participate.
Thank you. And then my next question is, I know we have restrictions to our board participating and stuff like this, but I think from the town hall that our conversation, education we had, it is important for us, I think, as board members to hear directly from our constituents and especially from our personnel. Is that something that's going to be open to us? And we'll rotate our, our own personnel between that.
We'd probably want to talk a little bit more about how, how that may work. I think our goal would be to provide the board with all of the data collected during the course of those conversations, as well as a distilled report based on dialogue across employee groups or on various nights or in meetings. So with respect to listening to all of the sessions, it is unlikely that you could get that accomplished on a particular evening. But we would arm the board with all of the information that was collected and be able to, uh, address questions, et cetera.
Now, I could add to that. We would train facilitators. They are in complete listening mode and collecting information. We're not trying to answer questions in the moment. We're not trying to direct the conversation. It would be ask the questions, collect the, the thoughts, collect the information, put it all together and then bring that back to the board. And then that's where the board has access to all of the information that we've collected. And then collectively, we would look at what could we do within the next school year? What would we try to do first? What's possible, what costs money, what doesn't? Uh, just to, to really always continue to improve the work environment and, and the way we run our schools' system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any other questions from board members at this time? And again, this is, we, we're not voting on this proposal. So this is, this is just something that we will, I, I'm guessing, getting from, the sense from the board that we would like staff to pursue this and bring it back to us on August, uh, October 1st as, as was suggested. So I would take that as a yes, please. But, but we are not voting on whether or not that happens. So I, just making sure, no questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Kiefer and Ms. Wall. Before we end discussion, I just want to make it clear for the viewing public, either here in the room or watching, that this resolution, perhaps people are somewhat confused, people saying vote yes, vote no, that the resolution as it's written states that the board does not authorize collective bargaining, but remains committed to recruiting high-quality staff and retaining the division's exemplary workforce by creating an environment where transparency and trust are the norm, where employees are valued and supported professionally and where competitive compensation for all staff remains a school board priority. And I know that we all remain committed to that. And we look forward to a very sincere employee input process that, that can really glean the information that I know the seven of us are seeking. Because id- ideally, collective bargaining would be a means to an end and that end would be the solving of what is perceived as problems. So if we can solve the problems, then we, that, we achieve the same end. So with that, I will close discussion. Ms. Oliver, will you please call the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley? Mr. Riffle?
No.
Dr. Cabazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
No.
Mrs. Donner? Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
All right, so we all move on to item 9.01. We will review advisory committee appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, the board reviewed the appointments in closed session. And this item will move forward to the next meeting for the board's consideration for approval.
Great, thank you. All right, we have arrived at board member comments. I know we've all just sort of said a lot and this was a heavy topic to end on. Are there any closing board member remarks that anyone would like to make?
Just, just quickly. First of all, I want to let the, the players, the coaches, the parents who came and talked to us a couple of meetings ago regarding trying to get lacrosse into our schools, just want to give you a very, I guess, a very quick update. That obviously isn't going to happen for this school year. But when we start talking about the budget early next year, if you want to come back and, and raise this proposal again, we will, as a board, consider whether we could, it'd be potential or possible to have lacrosse as a sport in, in our schools. Regarding an incident that took place yesterday at War Hill High School, first of all, I want to appreciate and thank the quick action of the school resource officer, the security officer, the staff and the James City County Police Department who quelled the issue and allowed the school to resume very quickly after that. There was an issue that arose on social media where parents apparently were provided only partial information. It appears that, that they didn't receive, I guess, the full story of what was going on. And I would just ask that from moving forward, that we provide the parents with the, with all the information that, that's out there, at least give them the full story. If it's a medical emergency, say it's a medical emergency. If it's a medical emergency caused by a fight, admit that. We don't need to go into the names of the students or anything like that. All that's protected. But I think we need to be open and honest with our parents, especially with their kids in the schools. They even trusted their children to us. And I think it's the least that we can do is trust them by giving them the full information when these issues arise. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. I'm just going to go by raising hands right now. Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say it's been fun working on our retreats and stuff. It's been enjoyable to get to know each of the board members and hear why they want certain words and why they don't want certain words and some of our planning for strategic goals. And I think it's just been good to kind of hear, maybe see our minds in motion because I think that's something that's kind of tough to portray in disvotes and, and things publicly. So I'm excited for how that's moving. And I just want to thank my colleagues for participating in that because it's not easy to get together and, and do those type of work. I, I try to wrangle people in higher office all the time to sit down and say nice things about themselves and they don't want to do that sometimes. It's, it's easier when you, you have a full team who wants to do that. And I think that's something that we should be appreciative and at least talk about. I also want to say thank you to my colleagues too for having a pretty decent discussion on, on the collective bargaining. I know it's pretty emotional for some of the members of our community and all of us kind of got on the board in different ways. And I'm just thankful for just the kind of way we've put to the decor we've had and how we've discussed this topic. Because we, we understand that these are just our workers trying to use an ability that they have given to them through a power of a law. And that they don't want to, you know, ruin our students or be, they're not criminals or whatever people try to paint union people as nowadays. These are just people we hire and they want what's best for them in their classroom. And I think everyone understands that. I want to just look to the future. I'm excited for our VSBA policy, I guess, conference. The Speaker Scott, always, this is the Speaker of the House, will be kind of addressing our, our, the VSBA. And I'm interested to hear what he has to say about education. Some kind of things come up. We all had a recent, I guess, the state legislature met to talk about the funding formula recently. And that's pretty interesting. It's kind of, they're putting parts of the J-Larke study that talk about how the funding formula is around 50 years old. I, I won't make an age joke here, but it's pretty interesting to see that like most of the things that we talk about with the economy are at kind of a now sense. When we talk about education, the funding formula is much older than members on this board. So it's interesting to see those results. And I'm, I'm very hopeful to hear that that stuff will be moving forward. Maybe not in this budget cycle, but in the 2025 biennium, to see kind of some stuff from the J-Larke study come about. I also want to mention it's, early voting starts on Friday. I think it's important to use your voice and to communicate. So register, look at your candidates, get ready to go. There's 45 days, there's no excuse. And then election day is on November 5th. So you should get out there and, and do your civic duty. Because I think it's something I encourage a lot of our young people to do. And when I speak in classes or uptown, that's, it's one of the last things I tell people is this is, I think you have in your wheelhouse. It's the way to kind of, you know, express your interests and, and to have a say in what's going on with your taxes or, you know, how your roads are constructed or whatever. You know, there's a lot of stuff that goes in this stuff we call government. So again, I'm thankful for tonight and I thank you for all the public. And, and maybe I didn't agree with you on this issue, but I did have great conversations with, with both sides. And I'm thankful for my service on this board and to hear from my community in ways that I have not experienced in the past. So I'm thankful, thank you.
I think Mrs. Hunley had her hand up.
So I'd like to thank everyone for coming out as well. And I would like to thank my board for wearing green. We went green or go green because we were super excited about all of our scores and progress. And it's just good to see all those green. We don't want to see red. But, so I just want to thank, and even Mr. Cabazos has green scrubs underneath that blue jacket. So he, so just to let you know. Definitely, I'm excited. It's time to get back into the schools, I think in October, if I looked at my calendar from last year. And I'm ready for some football. I know we'll have a few little rivalries. And I just want everyone to know that just being a former teacher and having a husband in the school and don't have children there now, but our schools are safe. And I know it's a lot going out nationwide with, with school shootings and children and that could just raise so much anxiety. But I feel that our schools are very safe. And I just thank all the people that are keeping us safe. And shout out to our lady in the back who's always here. So I feel safe, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Any comments on this end of the?
I just want to say, make one quick comment. I, I think WJCA did a really good job of making everybody aware of what, what about, about the collective bargaining. And I don't think they went home empty-handed.
Thank you, Dr. Cabazos. Ms. Chen, any comments?
Yeah, I guess similar to that and also to the go green. It is nice to see all of us in green up here. And it also shows that I think- Um, and it also shows that I think we're, you know, we're not just all wearing green. We 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 do. We do get along really well. We do celebrate our students. Um, and I I do love serving with everybody on this board. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess to any teachers or and and those teachers who are here. Um, supporting collective bargaining, I just want to say that um, hopefully. And you can follow us in the coming months. We are committed to working with the administration and we do hear you. Um, and and I am very hopeful that um, we can, we can continue um, those conversations and your voice can be heard. Um, so and I'm hoping that um, to our administration that we. Um, really do find a way to meet teachers where they are and um. You know, go to where they are and listen to them, see what they're doing. Um, with our school visits, um, find out what's really working and not what's and what's not working so we can really support them better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you. Um, I'd, it's so exciting as the school year has started to see some of our community partners starting to come in. I have an elementary school student and she came ex- home excited with her paper, because William and Mary Law School students. Are coming in and doing a pre-law class. Uh, there's also uh, folks coming in to teach our kids about behind the scenes with theater. Um, I look at the Williamsburg Youth Symphony Orchestra and they are helping to provide instruments for the kids. In the elementary schools as they're learning, um, in taking instruments, learning music for the first time. And so I just think there's so many ways that we connect with community partners. Uh, and if you aren't aware, if you've got an idea, we have a a way on our website for you to connect in and and. Provide information about what you would like to be able to do in the school. So I encourage uh, folks to do that. Um, I also appreciate the speakers who shared information with us and have emailed us and sent us information about the history of James Blair. Um, I think as we are all becoming more aware of the importance of a name and the importance of. What we choose to name things, I think it's important for us as a board to have that information as we think about. Um, who we stand for and and what environment and names that our children see um, when they come into our building. So I appreciate that, that education. So thank you. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. I just wanna thank everyone that came out and spoke tonight. We, we very much value hearing from our community, whether it's parents, concerned parents, um, teachers. Citizens that may or may not have an affiliation with our school, but we are all one community and we appreciate all the comments. Um, I also wanna thank WJCA for the way they have engaged in this. I know that this um, in in the collective bargaining. Quest, I know that tonight it didn't, it wasn't a favorable outcome. Um, but I have really appreciated the way we have been approached by WJCA. All the conversations that I've had in perfect, in person have been um, very amicable and and. Collaborative. And so we we genuinely do want to continue that um, as individuals and as a board as a whole. And I wanna thank my my colleagues all, I'll recog- um, I'll echo what Mr. Riffle said. This, you know, this is not necessarily an an easy thing to discuss in public. We, we have potentially seven nuanced views on this. Um, and I I do think that we have worked well together and um, hopefully. What will come out of it is is something that will um, advance. This school division for everyone, for for teachers and then ideally students alike. And um. Yeah, so I am just appreciative of everyone that that was part of the discussion tonight. I will read out our upcoming events. Uh, there's a VSA Legislative Advocacy Conference on um, September nineteenth, starting at nine AM. In Chester, at the Chesterfield Career and Technical Center in Midlothian, Virginia. Um, I think two or three board members are attending that. Policy Committee will meet on uh, September twentieth, twenty twenty-four at eight thirty AM. In room two hundred and three of the school board and central office. Special Education Advisory Committee meets on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. At six thirty PM in room three hundred of the annex. And our upcoming meetings in October, um, we have closed session on October first, starting at four PM in room three hundred of the annex. Um, which is followed by work session and action items, also on October first, starting at four thirty PM, room three hundred of the annex. Then closed session on October fifteenth will begin at six PM in room three hundred of the annex, followed by our regular meeting. With public hearing on recommended capital improvement plan, um, also on October fifteenth. Starting at six thirty PM here in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.